And get back to your Zoom and you'll see in the middle and you'll see it says live on the top left hand. You're live and we're streaming and we're recording there.
All right, hold on for me, it's setting up my meeting for YouTube. Done. All right, so. All right, so if I. All right, so if I X the window for town council.
You're gonna X YouTube right out. Once it, once it goes, close it.
Okay, I've closed it.
Okay, it, I can see that it's lot, we're live on the left-hand side, there's a live button says on YouTube. So we're, we're live now, you know, the meeting has started, which is fine, we, we're ready to go, that's fine.
T Lee, nod if he can hear me, my friend. Okay, what I'm asking is that during the committee reports, when we get to the waterfront committee, that's when I'm gonna ask you to unmute yourself and you can talk with, I believe. See, the problem is Bob is not gonna be attending tonight, apparently he has a birthday. And once he, so normally he would be sharing his waterfront committee meeting. I'll take that report on and probably almost immediately turn it over to you for an update on permitting. And then when we get to the town manager's report, I can talk a little bit more if I need to, but I don't think I will. Okay, thank you, my friend. Hey Craig, how are you? Good, you're muted, so you're gonna have to unmute yourself when you're ready to talk, okay?
I will, how are you?
Good, no worries, no worries.
Matt, you do not want me to report on updates boat ramp renovation permits and project, you want me to wait until waterfront, is that correct?
Let me get my agenda in front of me, which I'm looking at right now.
It is, uh, B, I believe.
Oh yes, item five B, yes, that's exactly when we're gonna do it, I'm sorry, I was looking at the.
I'll also do waterfront, is that fair?
Yeah, that's fair, because after that point you and I will have, I'll have gone through the Wharf and Marina three-year plan. You'll have talked about the roof, the boat ramp renovation permits. And then I, I'm not sure exactly what else would be left on waterfront other than those two things.
Very little.
Yeah, so that, that'd work just fine.
You got it, waiting for you.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Uh, yeah, I can hear you, can you hear me?
I can, thank you. I just sent you an email a moment ago.
Yeah, I just read it, yeah, okay.
All right, thank you, can you take care of that?
Yeah, okay.
All right, super, thank you.
All right. How many people we got on here?
Kent is obviously enjoying a meeting and wait, none of us can.
Is there any log into, we're not in the town council chambers. All right, let me see, we got a meeting, uh, we only got one council, Catherine's the only person here on council, yeah. Am I not looking at everybody?
Oh, you are, Catherine's it.
Okay. What time is it anyway, gee.
We have three minutes.
Three minutes.
Cutting it close here.
I know, I know, I think everybody's getting a little comfortable with this electronic format, they can just literally click on at the very last moment.
There comes somebody, oh Joy, all right, good.
Excellent.
Hi Joy.
Hi Joy.
Hi Joy.
Unmute, yeah.
Have to unmute yourself, ma'am.
Hello.
Are you sure you wanna hear me?
Absolutely.
I hear Mavis.
Mavis is on as well.
Mavis, hey, how's Mavis?
Hey Lisa, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, why is it that I cannot connect on my laptop? The link does not activate, but it does on my phone.
I have no earthly idea, we'd have to look at it together.
Did everybody else connect?
Oh Thelma, hey Thelma.
Through their laptop?
Yeah, I'm on mine.
I'm online.
Yeah.
I'm online.
Yeah.
Probably it's sunspots, that's what it is.
Sunspots.
Keep in mind now that we are, we are live and we are recording.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Hey Thelma, can you hear us? I see the top of your head, but that's about it.
Hi Thelma.
She's not, uh.
Oh, there's Ray.
Okay, we got a quorum at least, yeah.
Excellent.
She's connecting to audio. Hey Thelma, can you hear us?
Yes, I can now.
Oh wonderful, okay, okay, great, Ray, are you on? Ray, you're, you're muted. Oh, there you are.
I'm here, I can hear you.
All right, is it?
All right. One more minute.
Okay, I got, okay, I've got seven o'clock, I'm gonna call the regular meeting of the Nantucket Town Council to, to order a virtual meeting. Guess we need, Lisa, can you take the role?
Mayor Fossey.
Present.
Councilmember Bloxum. Councilmember Marino.
Present.
Councilmember Krausy.
Present.
Councilmember Ray Berger.
Present.
Councilmember Oswald.
Present.
Councilmember Gillespie.
Present.
Majority members are present, we have a quorum, sir.
Okay, great, uh, I guess we'll do the pledge of allegiance here, we guess we're gonna sit down, I guess that's gonna be all right if we do that, all right. I pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America. And to the republic.
And to the republic, which stands.
One nation.
One nation.
We got through, okay. It's, I'm, I'm not, I'm looking at my phone, my agenda's on that, I'm not talking on the phone here. All right, uh, yeah, we need to consider the approval of the minutes from the October 26th Town Council meeting. Uh, do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
I have some questions.
Well, we need a motion, we'll discuss it first.
Okay, I move that we discuss the meeting, the minutes.
Second.
I second that.
Okay, discussion on that, Mavis?
Okay, um, there were a couple of questions, page five, item C. It said, this was about the Wharf holding a credit card. Do you see where I am?
See. Wharf is resource, this line. Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Okay, um, isn't it just, it's not leaving, physically leaving the credit card without the Wharf, is that correct?
That's correct.
It sounds like, from these minutes, it sounds like it means that you must leave your credit card there. I understand that you might leave a, a receipt or, or a copy, but it sounds like holding the card is what you're intending.
Now, the intent, the intent would actually be to process the card through our DaQwa. At note, there would be no processing of the card, but that way we, as a, as a business, we don't actually retain the full credit card number. So that the person would have absolutely, absolute confidence that the town doesn't have their full credit card number. It would identify it by the last four digits.
Okay, it's just that, it's the way that reads, it says, holding the card. I just wanna be clear that that's what it means.
So we should, do you think you'd be comfortable with saying, holding, holding a credit card number or holding the last four digits of the credit card?
Yes, yes, that would, that would be accurate.
Okay, so then let's, in the, we can adjust the sentence that reads, Mr. Spuck explained that after four hours they would be charged a minimal fee. Holding the last four digits of the credit card number will also give the voter some responsibility for managing their time.
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, any other corrections or additions to the minutes?
There, yes, there was one other on page six on the town manager's comments.
Did you take her to the doctor?
Excuse me?
Yes.
Okay, um, it says, Councilmember Gillespie's comment was concerned about the lighting of the bushes, but she's not concerned about lighting the bushes. Her concern was lighting the area.
Okay.
Big, after the bushes have grown in, the concern, the concern was for safety that there would be, it would be very dark. And that it wasn't to light the bushes, it was to light the area.
Yeah, you're, you're not concerned about aesthetic lighting of the bushes, right, yeah?
Exactly.
Right, okay.
There it is.
Okay.
And also.
You there, okay. Okay.
I have one other comment, please.
Okay.
In the public comment in reference to the, the letter that was sent in public comment, there was a disconnect and it was, the error was corrected. It sounded like that that was the right thing, the way it was done, and it was not. And the cu, the customer who came forward said she received no other information except the letter. And her bill was paid according to her letter on, I mean, according to her bill on time. So it was corrected, but it was a town error and it should say so and, and reflect that in the minutes.
What page are you on there?
Uh, it was in the public comment and near the end.
On page five, is that where you are, Mavis?
I, I don't, I think so, I don't see, I just made a note, but I didn't put the page on that one. I think it was also page five.
Oh yeah, it is about public, yeah, right.
But that was, that was a town error and it should.
She said the letter wasn't her.
It says Mrs. Feige explained that the letter was in error.
Yeah, that's, 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 what's the matter with that?
No, no, it, it's, that, that the letter, no, that isn't how it went. And the, they, the woman was disconnected, her water was disconnected. There was no. Owning up of that error being the town's error in there.
But it says that Ms. Feige explained that the letter was in error. I'm not sure what other, what stronger language.
It said that the comments, that the people were, were, um, could, that the public that was affected by this was contacted.
And she was not.
Right. So I just wanna make sure that the, the, the minutes reflect the actual situation, we made a mistake, we own it.
Uh, I, I'm not, I guess you guys can change that a little bit, Lisa and.
I'm, I'm more than happy to, to make it more clear.
They say the customer was, the customer was inadvertently just, you know, disconnected, you know.
Correctly.
That's perfectly, that's perfectly fine, I don't have any issue with that.
All right, any other, any other corrections in the minutes?
No.
Uh, can we have a vote, approve the minutes, all in favor, aye?
Aye, aye, with the corrections.
All right, sounds like it passed there, okay. Uh, back, the, the next thing is a, is a public hearing. Public hearing regarding town of Nantucket considering USDA lending and grant possibilities for the purchase of police vehicles and equipment. Uh, Matt, I'm gonna open the public hearing, Matt's gonna explain this to us.
Sure, I'm glad to. Last month, Town Council adopted a resolution that allowed to, or to state the intent that the town was going to pursue funding from the USDA to purchase equipment for the police department. After that was adopted, one of the next procedures that needs to take place in order to pursue that funding is that we need to have a public hearing so that the residents of Onancock can comment on the intent of the town to pursue USDA funding, both in either lending or in grant. So that's the purpose of this hearing.
All right, uh, do we, do we have any public comment on this? Uh, we don't have too many public people here, really. Well, I guess we do now, yeah, any public comment, or any questions for Matt from the public about this? Okay, uh. So the public's had a chance to weigh in, any, any questions from council about it? Okay.
Oh, I feel like we discussed that last, at the last meeting, so I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
I agree.
All right, there being no public comment, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Okay, public hearing is closed, all right. We don't need to vote on anything, correct, Matt, it was just a public hearing, right?
That's correct.
All righty, uh. Okay, uh, we need, uh, the next item of public business is a motion to approve the revised appropriation of the CARES Act funds. Uh, I guess it's up to you again, Matt.
Yeah, so we need a, a motion to approve the adjusted appropriation, a second, a proper second, and then under discussion, I'm glad to review the adjusted appropriation for comment.
I'll make a motion that we approve the revised appropriation of the CARES Act funds.
Okay, uh, second?
I'll second.
Uh, okay, did you get that, Lisa? Yeah, okay. All right, uh, discussion, Matt.
Sure, if you'd like me to share my screen, which I'm happy to do that, let me share my screen with the appropriation. There it is. Hold on, this is a reasonably new technology, so everyone should be able to see my screen with the first appropriation that council approved on September 28th. And then a, an adjusted appropriation that I'm asking for consideration for tonight. The differences are, um, that in the first appropriation, we allotted for $25,000 for reserve for FF-CRA sick leave, which is the Family First Coronavirus Recovery Act. And what that did was, because every employee is allowed up to two weeks fully paid not to use their sick leave or vacation time if they fall victim to the coronavirus, we wanted to set money aside in case that happened. It looks as though, thankfully, that's not gonna happen. So what we're looking to do now is to allocate those funds that we had set aside for the, um, for that reserve in a different way. So VML came out with a, um, let me start with two things. One is, we distributed the Small Business Recovery Grant as council advised. But the, the, the way that a business qualified was that they needed to have a 15% reduction in revenue year over year, which seemed to indicate to us that they were negatively affected by the coro, the business environment that the coronavirus is operating. And we had several businesses apply and qualify, we distributed the full $37,000. But what we learned was that brand-new businesses didn't qualify because they didn't have a reduction in revenue because they were new. So what we wanted to do was we wanted to create a separate grant only for new businesses. And the grant dollar amount would go up to the level of the grant that we actually distributed. We distributed grants of approximately $3,000 to our local businesses that did experience the drop. But what we wanna do now is we wanna recommend to council that we put a new grant together only for new businesses for up to that $3,000. So that's the purpose of the new business grant of $10,000. The second two items that we want council to consider are both utility subsidies. And VML has put together several releases of what they believe are allowable uses of the CARES Act money. In their most recent, it literally version 12, they've been working very, very hard to support all of our local communities on this. But in version 12, they indicated that a utility subsidy would be possible. Because Onancock owns and operates its own utility company in the water and sewer, we believe that we could use some of these CARES monies to help some of our most needy and resource-constrained residents. So what we are recommending is that we have two pots of money or two bodies of people that might benefit directly from a utility subsidy. The first group are those folks who currently have a payment plan for their water and sewer bill with the town. The second are those residents who would qualify for a subsidy by signifying that they have been negatively affected by COVID and that they qualify by, um, meeting the federal poverty limit. So what we're saying is, we've got people who would and could benefit from the support if they meet the federal poverty levels and they've been negatively affected by COVID. If those two things happen, there's a utility subsidy that VML says we can appropriately use CARES money for, and it would help directly those residents. So if you look at the way we've used our COVID CARES money so far, we've cared for the town and its employees and our continuation of business, our visitors and our, our employees. We've, um, taken care of our local businesses, we've distributed over $100,000 in grants to our local businesses. We've given reimbursement to those businesses who've spent dollars on PPE that would never have been budgeted before. We're also now asking for grant monies for new businesses who have come into our town since COVID has become an issue for us. And now we're saying, we'd like to be able to help those residents who probably most need help. And because we own and operate a utility company, a utility subsidy falls under the VML guidelines for appropriate ways to use these monies. Does that make sense to everyone first?
Yes.
Uh, I had a question, what, what about somebody that's, uh, is affected by COVID but doesn't fall into the poverty level?
I think that's where we just simply need to have a guideline in place. What I was hoping to do when I, when I approached this subject with you a couple of weeks back, I was hoping that we could communicate it with our residents to find out the level of interest and the level of need. And that way, if there was not enough, um, there weren't gonna be enough residents that qualify, we could come back to council before we're required to distribute these funds with another, uh, recommendation for how we might use these monies. So that's where we're, um, that's what we're coming forward today, is saying, we believe that we can appropriately subsidize basically $21,400 worth of local residents who are resource-constrained and meet the federal poverty limit, and we can get them some help on their utility bills, which we all know locally can be a, can be a real burden.
So Matt, are you asking that there be some leeway in, in, and discretion or using your discretion or some guidelines for discretion to say, like, the mayor just asked if it was someone who, maybe they're suddenly out of work due to COVID, but they don't meet federal guidelines for poverty?
We need to have some boundary or some consistent guideline, in my opinion, because I really don't want, I don't want the discretion, to be quite honest with you. I'd like for them to, to need or to meet the guidelines and express a need because of COVID. And then we, we really, we want to distribute these monies in form of.
But it sounds like if someone were unemployed suddenly, or had, you know, for, over, over a period of time here, that they're unemployed, that they're gonna be in a situation they were not anticipating, and they.
Right, but given that situation, Mavis, given that situation, they would meet the federal poverty guidelines because their current income would fall below the federal poverty limit. I'm not suggesting we use last year's tax return. I'm suggesting we use current income extrapolated for a full year. So that's where an unemployed person would absolutely benefit from this.
Okay, that makes sense.
Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, how are we going to get, to get this information out to the businesses and residents?
Well, the, the businesses, it doesn't make any difference, they wouldn't qualify for a utility subsidy.
No, I'm talking about in general.
For the new business grants, for the new business grants, we know the dates that people applied for their business license. So I'm gonna go to every business that applied for a business license since last July. That's gonna allow for them to know that they would qualify for this. The same guidelines would be in effect, not the revenue, but as far as, um, if they have revenue that's less than the $3,000, they're not gonna make more than that. So the same cap is in place for the revenue. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, and it's gonna be evenly, eh, bah, evenly distributed among those businesses so that if it's a little bit less than 3,000 because more new businesses came into town, I think that's great. If it's less, it's capped at three.
So you are going to personally contact the businesses, correct?
Yes.
And what about the residents who would qualify? I would imagine that you know who needs a subsidy of $447.
I, I don't, I mean, one of the things that, it, it, because I don't have any access to revenue numbers or to income numbers, I would be reaching out to probably local churches, to the team captains on the Northeast Project, um, to, to find a way to share this information as quickly as possible. It's one of the other reasons we were trying to get this out and, and a couple of weeks ago, because you're absolutely right, Joy. Communicating this to the folks who need it is probably our biggest challenge because they don't use the same systems that we all use, whether it's emails or, um, you know, s, current tell. systems that we all use, whether it's emails or, um, you know, s- current telephone numbers. I mean, w- w- we would be able to take a guess, but I don't want to guess. I want to make sure that everyone has equal opportunity to participate in this. Ms. Gillespie, it looks like you're trying to say something, but you're muted right now, ma'am. Let me see if I can, I can ask you to unmute.
Okay.
Oh, there you are.
Okay, I'm sorry. What I was going to say is, is, is there a way, a way that you can maybe write up a letter or something so that we could pass them out?
Yes, ma'am. As soon as, as soon as council gives me the go ahead on this, um, I'm going to put out a, a one-page flyer that's going to be very simple. It's going to have the, the federal guidelines in a, in a table right on it. I really want to make this as simple as possible and make it as quick as possible because we do have a cons- time constraint on this. We've got basically one month from today and we need to distribute these funds.
We also need to make sure that we are hitting all of the town on some level because not everybody who's going to need those funds is in one side of the town.
That's, that's exactly right. I didn't mean to be presumptuous with that. Thank you, Lisa. So in addition to, um, asking our communication channel in the Northeast section, we're also going to publish it as we would any other announcement on our, on our message boards, on our Facebook, on our website. You know, there's a and our channels for communicating are getting broader and broader. So I'm happy to say that.
Okay, uh, any other discussion on this, council?
Not for me. Thank you.
Not for me. None for me.
Can we have a motion to approve this as Matt has presented it?
I so moved.
Uh, we got a second?
Yeah, the motions, yeah, the motions already been made and seconded.
Oh, okay. That's right. You're, I'm sorry. Yeah. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, okay. Anybody opposed? Okay, it carries. Okay.
Excellent. Thank you, folks, very much. I think that's going to be an important decision to a lot of people.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Uh, the next council discussion, the Onancock, Wharf and Marina three-year plan. Matt? I don't know who's this Matt or T Lee?
That one's me. Um, can you folks see my screen again?
We're still on the appropriation.
Are you?
I am.
Okay. I'm going to stop sharing that screen and I'm going to share a new screen. Now do you see a three-year plan?
Yes.
Okay, great. One of the things I need to be clear on is that the, the package that I had in my hands when we distributed it had this piece of paper in it. But the email that went out was missing this page, but it did have the support page. So it was sort of a, a half-baked presentation and for that I do apologize. The, the, one of the things I need to be clear is that we're not asking council for any decision tonight on this information. This is just for information purposes only. So as I talk through it, and now you do have that, that schedule in front of you, it should help it come to life a little bit more. Again, there's no decision. This is only as one of the departments that were presenting three-year plans. So last month it was for the police department and this month it's for the wharf and next month it'll be for one other. That's the way we're going through it up until the point when we reach our budget season. And then you'll have a sense of what direction each department is going to need to go. And that's how you're going to start to prioritize your budget decisions for this year and next and that type of thing. So I'm hoping that that makes a little bit more sense. Again, there's no decision that's being asked of you tonight. Just absorb a little bit of information and I want to share some, the, the ways that we have been calculating these new numbers and some of the assumptions that have been made. So the assumptions that have been made, I'm going to roll to the bottom here real quick, maybe. The assumptions on the bottom are these. And I'm going to read them a little bit out of order, but they make sense in priority. So the first, the first assumption or goal is that income from the wharf will return 10% to the town, which means basically speaking, they're going to make 10% profit. Couple of months ago, I had come forward to council and I said, I want you to start thinking about the purpose of the wharf. Is it to make money? Is it going to be an investment that the town's going to make? Are we, uh, do we know it's going to cost us money every year? Do we expect it to make a little bit money every year? What's the purpose of the wharf financially? So here, I just put an assumption goal that we're going to return 10%. Obviously, if it's different than that, if it's higher, if it's lower, we can adjust these numbers because there's no decision that's being made. This is just simply for information. So the assumption goal is that we're going to make 10% profit. And that 10% profit obviously goes into the, the general fund of the town. The next assumption is, is that we're going to reinvest 10% in deferred maintenance and capital improvements. When I say deferred maintenance, I mean things like, look, we, we've spent a lot of money on things like, or we're about to spend money on, on pedestals, on floating docks, on ramps. And we're going to put all of these investments in and I want to make sure that we're using a part of the monies to take care of those down the road. We have preventive maintenance that we have to do on our, on our pedestals. We need to make sure that we're treating our, our wood decking properly and we're treating it and we're power washing the building and we're painting it when we need to paint it. We're changing the light fixtures as we need to change them. So that's what this is there to account for. So 10% return to the town, 10% spend on the facility to make sure we up, we, uh, keep it up. So there's no big surprises with capital down the road. We want to take care of our home. The next thing that we're doing is we said, um, we want to staff the wharf from morning until sunset during the season. That's what we want to be able to do. We want somebody there to represent the town, whether it's selling fuel, taking care of customers. If somebody wants to come in and ask where, where I can go to dinner, we want to make sure there's somebody there to talk with. We think that's one of our strongest assets at the wharf is our people. And at, you know, honestly, the way we do business currently at 4:30 or so in the afternoon, our people leave. Well, that leaves a full dinner shift where people don't know what to do. There's nobody to talk to. And I just want somebody to be there so that every person who experiences a Nancox wharf experiences our people because that's what we have to offer. If you come back and look at our reviews, the reviews are saying Craig and his team take great care of our transient boaters. Last, last month, I think it was, y'all voted on the ability for our local boaters to be able to use our slips at no cost for four hours. So now our people are going to be there to help our local boaters up to four hours. They're going to be able to help our transient traffic. They're going to be there to help our people. That's the way I want to see this business grow and that's the way it will grow because our people are our strongest asset. And then one of the things that we learned as we were going through with Waterfront Committee, I asked Craig if he would go around to every one of the marinas that we, uh, compete with, so to speak, our comparable market, whether it's Urbana, whether it's Cape Charles, whether it's Reedville, pick, pick, pick a marina, but I want a consistent market to compare ourselves to. So we came back, he came back rather with, I'm going to say 10 or 12 marinas around the bay. And I asked him then to go through and give me the statistics on those marinas. How much do they charge per linear foot? What amenities do they have? What's the, what's the good and the bad about being a boater and going to that marina? And then I wanted to create a checklist and I wanted to see how our amenities compared to the amenities of those competing mar- marinas. And one of the things that I found to be fascinating and that we didn't have and almost every other marina did were two things. One, are golf carts available to the, to the guests? And the other is, is a courtesy car available to the guests. And almost without fail, 80% of the other marinas had courtesy cars and almost 100% had golf carts. So with Waterfront Committee, we, we pursued a lot of these conversations. I've already talked with the, the garf- golf cart rental company about what it would look like to get street legal golf carts down in town. And we've already struck up a conversation where next season we'll be able to, uh, rent. We'll start with two golf carts. And then if we have a market for it, we'll build it to three or to four. And we've worked with Craig on where they're going to park and who's going to charge them up and where all those things are going to happen. So that part of it's already in place. The courtesy car was another, it was an awkward question. So we started talking about it, but at the same time we started talking about it, we were talking to you folks about police cars. So one of the things that we sort of put on the table was, well, hey, we've got this police car, the, the Crown Vic. It's, it's unmarked. It's unbelievably durable and safe. So if we were to peel all of the equipment and the lights and whatnot out of that thing, what would prevent us from having that be the, the wharf's courtesy car? So we started pursuing that. Then I called the insurance company because of course I want to make sure that we don't have any liability issues. The, the insurance company said, no problem. Actually, here's, uh, here's a, a liability form, a rental form that another community like yours uses for courtesy cars. We've vetted it. Here's the form. We've already approved it. Here it is. So they've really handed us everything that we need in order to do this.
Ooh.
So, yeah, well, you know, we like to make sense when we can. So we're, we're trying to say, look, if we want to be competitive with our, with the, with the marinas in our region, we know we need to get these, uh, we, these amenities. The amenities are going to come to us with very little cost and they're incredibly important. And here's the next line that I'm going to go up to and start talking about. I'm going to go up to the revenue line. So this revenue line, which is right here, this revenue line in the last three years has been taking a tumble in a, in a, in a terrible direction. So what we're saying is back in 18, we had $54,000 worth of transient traffic. In 19, it was 51,000. Last year it was a really tough year. We were at like 35,000. If we're going to achieve the goals that we had down below with returning 10%, paying 10% for capital, you know, also staffing it for the full course of the day, we're going to need more revenue. Simply stated, we're going to need more revenue. So then here, I'm going to go to the second page now and I'm going to go to this section down here. Okay? And I'm going to talk through numbers that are, I'm going to go, I'm going to try to go slow. But at the end of the day, this is going to sound like Greek to many of us. So know that I know that. And also I'm happy to meet with anybody individually to go through this again and again and again, because it is critically important that we all understand. Our season in Onancock is 21 weeks. That's it. From the day that we open until the day that we close, we've got 21 weeks. We have thirteen, we have 13 slips. We paid a lot of money for our floating docks. We have 13 spaces into which people can slip their boats. So now, if you look at it, we've got 21 weeks. We have 13 slips. The next question is, well, how many, how many boats is it going to take to generate the kind of revenue that we need? When we went through the comparison, marina to marina to marina, all the way around the bay, we currently charge $2 per linear foot. That is pretty much spot on. You know, maybe somebody's $1.95, maybe somebody's 205. The end of the day, two bucks is right in the zone. So we're not overpriced, we're not underpriced, but it's not like we can double it, you know, because then we'll price ourselves out of the market. So we make two bucks a linear foot, we have 13 slips, we have 21 weeks. What we're going to do is we're going to create something that we're going to call Slip Nights. And Slip Nights means every night for 21 weeks, for 13 slips, there's only a certain number of slips available. If you're curious, it's 1911 right here. So we have the possibility to rent 1911 slips for the entire season. Well, at two bucks a foot and at our average vessel size of 30 feet, and I will say that's a conservative number. Many of our vessels are a little bit bigger than that, but our conservative number is 30 buck, 30 feet. So if we have a 30-foot boat that we charge two bucks a linear foot and we do it 13 in a row, all week, all of our slips, and we have 21, 21 weeks, there's only a certain dollar amount that we're going to bring in. That's what I'm trying to get at. Are the, the number of slips, the number of nights and the boats that we get, there's only a certain number of dollars that we're going to be able to generate with our slips. Okay? Does everybody kind of understand the concept of Slip Nights?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Now I'm going to go back to the first page. And I'm going to say, here's what we need to happen to revenue over the next three years. We need to go from 33,000 in the current year up to 55,000 basically next year. Now, a lot of people are like, whoa, that's a massive increase. It's really not because if you look back a couple of years, we were already there. Okay? So we're not doing anything that we didn't do a couple of years ago. So what I'm saying is next year, we're going to bring it back to right where we were. After that though, we're going to need to inch it up. We're going to need to get more Slip Nights. The percentage of slips that are vacant have to go down. That's what Craig and I have been working on very carefully during his off-season. We're looking at who we're talk, looking at it from the boater's perspective. If they're planning a trip, what are they reading? What are they looking at? What websites are they visiting? And we want to make sure that a Nancox is well-presented in all of those places. Next, I'm asking him to go back and say, okay, which boat clubs visited us over the last few years? You know, if the whalers came in or the skits came in or whatever the, whatever the, the, the boat club is, let's reach out to that boat club over the off-season and say, what can we do to invite you back to Onancock? That's what we want to do. So during this off-season, Craig is going to be looking at communicating with all of our potential guests, whether they visited us in the past or whether they're looking at us anew in some of those new places. But this revenue that we're asking for, this is the target. And as far as Slip Nights is concerned, that's our metric. That's what we're looking at. So you folks will sit there and say, we have 1911 Slip Nights. How are we doing? It's a very tangible number. We know it's not going to grow unless, you know, we add new slips, which, you know, you folks would know that that happens. So that's what I'm getting at. Really tangible, really simple, very easy metric. It's one of those things that I'm going to be able to report back on easily, consistency, consistently without failure. So does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. I'm not going to take that long on anything else, I promise you. But that's the whole concept of our revenue. It's the most important number because that's where we're going to get the money to do our capital improvements. That's where we're going to get the money to pay for our staffing. That's where we're going to get to pay the money to, to pay back the town or to have the reserve for the town. Okay. The next numbers that I'm going to look at, I'm going to sort of scroll down here and I'm going to see if we can show it all in one is gas. Okay? We sell a lot of gas. It's an important number for us. The top line where it says gasoline sales, you can see it sort of bumps around a little bit here because gas prices go up and down. So looking at the top line of gas revenue, it's not all that meaningful. One year's gas is $2.30, the next year it's $4. Did we sell fewer gallons? Did we sell fewer gallons? I don't know. So the next question is, this is the line on the bottom. This line is reported on every single one of your monthly Wharf financial reports, and it's margin on fuel. What that is, is that sales minus the cost equals margin. Sales minus cost equals margin. That's the formula. So every year, every month, you'll be able to see. How much margin we're making on gas sales. And I'll be straight up honest with you, when we pay the kind of money that we're paying for a new ramp. I would expect enhanced local traffic, and that means enhanced gas sales. Because we have a way of pricing our gasoline that makes us very competitive to anyplace else on the shore. You're not going to go down and say, oh my gosh, you know, Cape Charles is seventy-five cents cheaper. They're not. We price ourselves off of everybody else, and we have a consistent margin that we make per gallon of gas. It's really simple to price, and it's also competitive around our market. So that's what we're doing. So you'll be able to look every month. And say, how much are we making on gas? How are we doing compared to prior year? That's your bogey. That's what you're looking at. Okay? Now, the next little bit is wages. Wages are an important number for us, because it's obviously one of our biggest expenses. It's our biggest non-fuel expense. It's also the one where there's the most management involved. What we're saying is, if our goal is to staff the Wharf for twenty-one weeks from seven-thirty in the morning. Until, let's say, nine o'clock at night, eight-thirty at night. We've got to be able to have enough money to give Craig the ability to hire people. From seven-thirty in the morning until eight-thirty at night for twenty-one weeks. That's asking a lot for a couple of reasons. One is the market pool for hourly people. Is really hard. It's really hard. So one of the things that we're looking at is. Do we just throw money at young people to get them to work here? Or is there something more that we can do? Is it a consistent work schedule so they can have a second job? Is it, you know, whatever it is, we need to come up with that number. But at the end of the day. You know, we can't just throw money at people, because honestly, I would then have to look Craig in the eye. And say, I know that we've got this fifteen-year-old kid that's actually making more than you. And that's not okay with me.
No.
So we've got to come up with the mix that treats Craig like a respected professional. And we can staff with young people in the summertime, so they've got a great summer job. And we've got great people representing us down at the Wharf. It's not an easy, not an easy algorithm to crack, that I will promise you. But it's one that Craig and I are working very closely together to solve. We're going to have to start advertising earlier. We're going to have to get the schedules worked out way ahead of time. We're going to have to get more people than we actually need, so that when the young people drop off, as they will. We have backup. We can't just rely on Craig working, you know, seventeen hours a day, every day. It just won't work. It's not a sustainable model. He needs to be able to take some time off and have a vacation with his family. He needs to be able to, you know, there's a quality of life that has to happen when you work for the town. So all of those things. Have to consider. It's probably our biggest management challenge of the Wharf. The rest of everything, square credit card fees. Look, credit card fees are the cost of doing business anyplace that you take credit cards. The way we used to do it is we used to say, well, if you pay by credit card, we're going to charge you three percent more. The way I look at it is it's cost of doing business. If you go into Walmart, or you go into Macy's and you pay for cash, or you pay for the credit card, it costs the same thing. So let's not reach our handout. Let's just do business like people do business and price ourselves appropriately. So we have to make sure that we, what's that?
I just wanted to say, I totally agree with that. The cost of doing business and accepting a credit card is just that.
Exactly. So that's the way we're going to do it going forward. So there's no cash price, credit price, there's none of those things. It's just simply, it's a cost of doing business. If you pay a dollar, you pay a dollar. That's all. Okay. Down the road a little bit are the advertising, you know, like things like other operating expenses. I just scale those up inflationary over the course of the years. Some of the expenses went to zero, like telephone. Because of the new system that we're putting in place, we're going to be absorbing that administratively. I don't need to charge it out to different departments. Same thing with janitorial supplies. We're going to buy things centrally so we can do it more efficiently. So I'm not going to charge him for a bottle of Windex and things like that. We're just going to take care of that. It's again, it's a cost of doing business. But we use those things townwide. We don't just use them at the Wharf. I think that'll make Craig's job easier. It'll make him able to focus on what he should be focusing on. Not trying to find a bottle of cleaner on sale. Let's take care of that ourselves. He can just come and use the inventory when he needs to. The advertising and dues. Look, it's going to, like I said, we're going to have to communicate with the people who are potential customers. There is going to be. There are going to be advertising costs. There are going to be costs for, you know, newsletter generation and things like that. But if we're going to attract and retain and get return customers. We need to communicate with them and we need to do it on a professional level. So there is going to be costs of that. Now, there are grants that we've received in the past from Big that help us with advertising. It'd be great if we could get some of those offset again. I think we will. But, you know, a burden hand, you know what I mean? So if it can offset, it will offset, and it'll just make everything a little bit easier. And then the bottom line is capital improvements. If you look at it, that's ten percent of the top line. You know, like I say, we're going to pay ten percent of our top line for capital improvements and whatnot. So. That's the three-year plan. Now, what I will tell you is that we're asking for revenue and expenses. That we're not there yet. So what I'm saying is, we're not going to get ten percent return, and we're not going to be able to do that in year one. So let's not try to force it. Let's ease our way in up to the point where we're getting our ten percent return. So that's sort of the sacrifice of the goal, is we're going to achieve all of the goals except for. The profit that we return to the town. It's just not going to be there in year one. It's not fair to ask of it. So. I'm just going to ease my way into that. By year three, we'll get there. But year one and two, we're just going to kind of eke our way up there. Does that all make sense?
Yes.
Okay, so Craig did take time out of his evening to come join us. So. Just like we did with Chief, I was hoping that y'all could just chat with him, ask him any questions operationally that you might have. Any questions about anything that's going on at the Wharf? The financial and the plan, that's on me. The operations obviously are his, Bailey Wicks. So I hope you take a minute and chat with him.
I'm fine, how are you? I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there, um. Like catalogs, not catalogs, but when. What am I thinking? Books that you can subscribe to, or magazines, or whatever it is that you subscribe to that are. That would give us ideas of what's happening in the industry. That's what I'm thinking. Industry magazines. That would help you and help us see where we are in comparison to everyone else and what else is coming up.
I would suggest probably, how I compare us to everybody else. I use a website, it's called waterwaysguide.com. And that kind of will paint a greater picture of how we actually compare and where we stand with our competition.
Okay, but that's strictly by the numbers. I'm saying like, in the gallery business that I do. I get magazines that are related to the industry and I see trends and things like that. Of what's coming in terms of new product. Is there anything like that?
Well, I know that there's a few free publications that get delivered to the Wharf. Those are some of the things that I've. You know, they get delivered and I'm thinking that that's probably one of the things off-season that I will be bringing to Matt. To see if we can get in these publications.
Right.
I'm sorry?
It's a very good idea.
Yeah, I mean, they get delivered, they get dispersed free throughout all the, through the Wharfs and marinas throughout the Greater Chesapeake area. So, yeah, I mean, we can, I've not yet had that conversation with Matt. I just, as you well know, closed thirty-first of October. We are getting there, so more to come on that, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question, Craig.
Yes, ma'am.
But first I want to thank you. You do an excellent job at the Wharf, and Matt put together this great presentation in the Waterfront Committee, too. It seems like we have one thousand nine hundred and eleven slips for the season. At two dollars a foot for a thirty-foot vessel. If we rented every one of those one thousand nine hundred and eleven slips, that's a total for the season of a hundred and fourteen thousand. Six hundred and sixty dollars. So do you think?
At thirty foot?
Yes, yeah, which is, you say that's the average, right?
Well, that's a, it's a conservative average, but yes.
Good, that's good. So do you think projecting two thousand twenty-four, eighty-seven thousand five hundred? Is that possible? I know, Matt, you've researched this carefully.
Well, it's actually a challenging research project. So thanks for bringing it up, because I did bring it to the Waterfront Committee. The same, the exact same question. I said, is it reasonable for us to think? Be able to fill three-quarters of our slips? Yeah, and really what it came back to was, first of all, we don't know. Secondly, it's anecdotal at best. You know, we've got a lot of people who are. Who are boaters who go to other marinas and say, yeah, they pretty much seem like they're three-quarters full. But that's as good as we get. The other thing that I want to be really clear on is thirty feet. Is a small boat compared to what our mostly vessels are. So the larger the vessel, the lower the percentage occupancy we're going to need. So if we did all thirty-eight footers, that goes from three-quarters full down to like fifty-six percent full. So the conservative vessel length actually helps us with occupancy percentages. So we still have nineteen hundred and eleven. That number's not going to change. But if we get an average of thirty-eight feet, our percentage can go down, because obviously the longer the boat, the more revenue it generates.
Thank you.
Craig, this is Catherine. I just wanted to say thank you also. As you probably know, I live close to the Wharf, and so I'm down there a lot. And I was down there about a month or so ago, and there were some kids climbing the trees in the park. Which is out of your jurisdiction.
I was, I was definitely on site for that, though, yes.
You were. You were totally on it and so appropriate with those kids that were just being kids, honestly. I mean, this is a tough time for kids right now, right? And whatever you said to them, I didn't eavesdrop, but whatever you said totally worked, because they got down out of the trees. They hung out at the picnic table. So, you know, you really are trying to pull this holistic view together at the Wharf. And I really appreciate that, and everyone else does as well, I'm sure.
Well, yes, ma'am, and I appreciate that. And the only reason that I had to choose my words with young people is because they could be my future help. So, you know, I try to be as respectful as possible, but yeah, I mean, you know, it's. It's a little tough at times, but, you know, I mean, like I said, I treat them with respect. And, you know, I, that's, I don't mind them being down there, because one of these days they may be working down there. So it is a nice place to be and a good place to hang out, as long as things aren't awry. And they don't cause too much of a ruckus with my guests and the regular general public, but.
You have a Swiss Army knife job, that's for sure. Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any more questions?
Excellent. Thanks, Craig. I appreciate you taking the time.
Yes, sir.
All right, I don't have anything left in this agenda item if no one else does.
Okay, well, let's go on to the Wharf update, ramp update. Who's doing that?
I can start, but we actually have a special guest, and T Lee is here. I think we can hear you, T Lee. Go ahead.
Yes, sir, can you hear me?
Yes, can.
Barely.
Let me yell, and then you tell me to. T Lee Bird, thirty-eight Ames Street. Good evening, Mayor Foskey, members of council, town manager Spuck, and all the residents and attendants. As a member of the Nantucket Waterfront Committee, it is my pleasure to offer the following update regarding permitting and status of the ramp renovations. Permit application was presented to the Acemac County Wetlands Board this past Thursday, November the nineteenth. By our engineer, Mr. John Som of JW Som Engineering, Inc., and passed unanimously. John did a great job with the presentation and explained every aspect of the replacement and expansion of our boat ramp. Typically, the county wetlands requires approximately ten days or close to the end of the month for their permitting. I approached Ms. Allison Lay, Environmental Engineering. With the Virginia Marine Resources Commission and asked her thoughts on their permitting timeline. She informed me that with Mr. Som's assistance, the VRMC permit should be available no later than one month. And in some cases, two weeks, the November nineteenth. County approval, therefore, let's say, mid to late December. With our fingers crossed regarding weather, it appears that our marine contractor, Mr. Charlie Dolby of Murtech Corporation. Will have a good chance of finishing their repairs before the boating season of two thousand twenty-one. I'd like to thank the town manager, Mr. Spuck, for his persistence and arranging Mr. Som's engineering firm. That helped walk us through this, did a great job. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, T Lee. Does anybody have any questions about the ramp project?
When is it going to start? Again, I'm sorry, T Lee.
We will start as soon as we can after permitting, which will be, let's say, the very end of the year. If the weather holds and Charlie doesn't have any small jobs, then certainly by the middle of January, he'll be going. It can vary. The first time I had Charlie down, long before we really got involved with this thing, and I just wanted to learn. He told me two straight weeks, fourteen days, he'd go a long way. Now, that was before we learned from Mr. Som that we could use a different kind of tieback that saves money, time. It doesn't tear up our pavement we spent a lot of money on last year. It just allows him to go through everything on the Mallard side, the north, if you will, and drill them straight in. So that's going to be a lifesaver. He's given us a lot of great ideas, and he's well worth the money, Matt, that we spent, and I congratulate you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the update of the boat ramp? Anything from the public? Okay. All right, well, thank you, T Lee. Great job. Moving on, the next thing is the council discussion, C, discuss meeting electronically. Matt?
Yeah, I just wanted to touch base quickly. I know last month we had put the. The policies in place that allow for continuance of government and meeting electronically. And we've been following the governor's promulgated rules about the fact that during the state of emergency for Virginia. That we're allowed to meet electronically. So I just wanted to say, I guess publicly and for everybody else, that we will be meeting electronically. Until further notice. When we do say meeting electronically, though, I just want it to be clear for council especially. What's happening is that if an attendee wants to participate in the meeting. He or she will use the Zoom link. And you'll see that most everybody that's in the meeting tonight is using the. And you'll see that most everybody that's in the meeting tonight is using the Zoom link. So that if during the public comment, he or she wants to make a comment, they'll simply be able to unmute themselves, share appropriately, and then mute themselves again and be done. The uh, the folks who want to attend and know that they are not going to participate can simply go to the YouTube highlight at the bottom of our website. So if you go to our website, select the YouTube icon, you can go and watch the meeting with a, I think it's a thirty second delay. And you will not be able to participate, but you would hear everything that's happening virtually live. So that's what it means to attend or to have our, our meetings electronically. One of the things I wanted to touch on, um, follows up on an email I got this afternoon. If a council member um, wants to attend via telephone rather than by video, there's nothing in our code that says that you have to attend by video. We just simply need you to attend by telephone or by video um, in order to create our quorum. And our quorum obviously doesn't need to be physically present because none of us are in the same place, but our policy allows for that. So it's by telephone or by video, you'll be able to attend and participate by using the Zoom link. And you'll be able to participate without being able to uh interact by using the Zoom button. Does that make, or by using the YouTube button, sorry, um, does that make sense to everyone? Is that, is that the direction that we expected to go with this?
Yeah, yes.
Great, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Great.
Okay, uh, well, moving on, I think this one's pretty simple here. Uh, we need a motion to change the uh December twenty-eighth uh town council meeting and move it to December twenty-first.
I moved that we changed the town council meeting from December the twenty-eighth to December the twenty-first.
All right, uh, second?
Second.
Catherine, second. Uh, any discussion?
Just a question, why?
Yeah, yeah. Why are we doing it? Yeah.
The date of, yeah, the date of December twenty-eighth is going to fall between Christmas and New Year's, and that's a time when attendance is going to be very complicated. So by holding it before the holiday, it might avoid that.
Yeah.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion carried. All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before you go on to the public comment, I- Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but we have an additional uh, uh, item we need to uh, that involves the uh Northeast project, and Matt's going to tell us about that.
Yeah. If you remember an email I sent you folks, I think it was at the end of last week. It's concerning the approval of three thousand dollars uh of town money. And before I make a commitment, I wanted to run it past you. So I tried to outline everything in an email. I'm going to try and do it again now for everybody that's in the meeting so that we can all be completely clear on what's happened. We received a planning grant from CDBG to pursue an application for a community improvement grant in the Northeast section. So the planning grant we received was for forty thousand dollars. That forty thousand dollars, we were going to spend to get all of the information necessary in order to complete an application to CDBG for the community improvement grant for the Northeast section. That forty thousand dollars inside of it had had a budget for a PER or a preliminary engineering report. The preliminary engineering report was budgeted for ten thousand dollars. When we actually put our list of requirements together and solicited bids, the lowest bid came back at sixteen thousand dollars, which is significantly higher as a percentage goes than the ten thousand dollars that was in the budget. So AMPDC recognizes that was amiss, and that they have generously offered to share the cost with us and say they will pay three thousand if we pay for three thousand. Now, my next question to AMPDC was, you know, wh- what is our maximum out of pocket as a town for this project? And I wanted to be clear, I know a lot of this has been presented to you in the past, so I apologize for the redundancy, but some of us just weren't as familiar with it as you, so I'm just going to go through it anyway. A community improvement grant requires a town match of five percent. Five percent. So any grant that we receive after, in a community improvement grant, we're going to, we're going to be a, we're going to be required to contribute five percent. We're capped at a certain dollar amount for the grant. So we can say that that would be our, our cap maximum possible grant would be one point four million dollars. That one point four million dollars, if we got the maximum grant, our five percent would be seventy thousand dollars. Okay, so our maximum out of pocket on the grant would be seventy thousand dollars. Now, we would be looking for alternative funding sources to offset that match, but that's worst case scenario, seventy thousand dollars, the town has to write a check. If we do decide, if you do decide to contribute the three thousand dollars to get the PER complete, that's going to be a total out of pocket maximum of seventy-three thousand dollars. So I wanted to be very clear at the front end what we were looking for. Now, the next question I asked is, what if we didn't get a PER? The PER is required for any infrastructure portion of the grant. So the grant that we would be applying for, I'm going to overly simplify it and say it comes in two sections. One is a housing section, and one is an infrastructure section. If we only do the housing section, we do not require a PER. The infrastructure section of the grant is going to provide things like sidewalks, streetlights, ditch management for stormwater, possibly moving some of the uh overhead utilities to underground, which might help the fire department a little bit. So those are the, the, also, there are three streets. Two of them would qualify to transfer into V dot secondary system. If you remember, we just did that with a couple of the streets in town where we take the responsibility of permanent maintenance away from the town and transfer to V dot. Well, there are two streets in the Northeast section that if we were to get the infrastructure grant approved, we could do the updates to those streets, and then those would qualify to transfer over to V dot for permanent maintenance. So that's one benefit. And then there's another street that could desperately use some upkeep. It will never be transferred over to V dot because the standards for V dot are a little bit different. But the street itself is in terrible shape, and it could use some help, uh, even though we get to keep it forever. So that's what the infrastructure portion would be. So if we chose not to pursue an infrastructure grant as part of the CIG or Community Improvement Grant, we do not need the PER or the, the uh, the engineering report. So that's really where the, the conversation comes in. We had a budget overrun on the report from ten thousand to sixteen thousand. AMPDC has generously offered to share that cau- that over, uh, that bid cost with, in half, so we would pay three, they would pay three. Uh, then our maximum out of pocket would be, if we got the maximum grant, would be seventy thousand dollars, plus this three thousand dollars that we would contribute. So our maximum total out of pocket for this potential project is seventy-three thousand. Does that make sense to everybody? Was it clear?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So the ask on the table is, would council approve a three thousand dollar expenditure for the uh PER to be complete?
The more run benefit- I would. And I'll tell you why, ma'am, because we're going to get, hopefully, one point four million by investing seventy-three thousand, that's five percent. And for that seventy-three million, the safety in our town is improved. The upgrades in our town are improved, which, you know, that's, that's all a good thing. So I have no problem with a three thousand dollar raise for the project. And I hope that we go for both housing and infrastructure.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I think all along, we've, the infrastructure's always been part of this grant process, and if we eliminate that now, I think we're doing a disservice to the-
I agree.
Community. I didn't even realize that-
The community and, and to the town.
The town, yeah, I, I think, yeah, I mean, I think that, I didn't even realize that we could take that out, to be honest with you, yeah.
I ain't either.
I think this is a combined thing. I think we need to more, do more than just, you know, renovate, the housing people are paying, paying us back for their renovations. And the, the infrastructure is, is, you know, especially street lighting and, and drainage and, and things like that, or um, the side, we, you know, side, we need to extend that sidewalk down Car Street. Uh, it should have been done a long, you know, when we did Car Street. So anyway, uh, yeah, I, I, that, I'm, so that's my opinion, but I, I don't have a vote, so uh, anybody else-
The infrastructure is our responsibility.
Yeah, yeah. And it's, it's like, like Joy said, that's a small price to pay for that much work.
Yes, for that much return.
Yeah. So uh, do we have a motion uh to uh, uh, pay this three thousand dollars, so?
I make a motion that we um, pay the three thousand dollars for the uh, what's it called, Matt? The-
PER.
PER, okay, for the PER.
I second it.
Okay, uh, I think, I think uh, Thoma got in there first. Uh, all right, any more, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any negatives, any no? Okay, all right, Matt, uh, that's done, all right.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, uh, we're, at this time in the meeting, we're uh, up to a, a public comment about anything we haven't talked about or anything any of the public wants to talk about. Do we have any public comment uh, from anyone?
Um, this is Bill Burnham with the Onancock Business and Civic Association, and I did want to speak during the public comment about Christmas activities in the town. Um, and to update the council on, uh, not only the planning that's gone into it to this point, but also the adjustments that have to, uh, that have had to have been made um, since the governor's latest announcement. So if I could have a few minutes of your time to um, talk about that, I'd appreciate it. As you, you hopefully know, um, uh, the Christmas in Onancock um, has replaced the Homes Tour this year. Planning for this started as far back as July, um, when we came up with the idea of, well, actually, one of our OBCA members came up with the idea of the Believe Christmas Driving Tour, uh, which has been coming together nicely. Car Place uh, raised the idea of Lights on the Lawn, which is a display of twenty Christmas trees on the front lawn of Car Place. This kind of dovetails nicely into the town's efforts to light the bridge, uh, the Christmas tree, and the um docks along the central branch of the creek. And um, everything really culminating in the Drive Tour. We've had really great, great buy-in, and I think it's one of the nice things about working with both businesses and civic members to be creative and come up with new ideas to adjust to, to COVID essentially. And so I just wanted to kind of lay that out there. Uh, we have a buy-in from the Onancock Volunteer Fire Department, who will be leading the Believe Driving Tour Parade. Historic Onancock School has offered to allow their facility, mainly the parking lot, to be the starting point of the Driving Tour. Car Place has arranged for electricity to light the twenty trees. Twenty different businesses and/or residents have adopted trees, um, and will be decorating them um, in their kind of unique style. And uh, I just wanted to make myself available also to answer any questions you guys might have about um, these events, especially in light of some of the newer restrictions that have come down.
Bill, this is Mephist. Have you heard anything more about the um, North Street Playhouse, what they're going to be doing?
Only from their initial press release, uh, and then a thumbs up from um, uh, Terry Bliss of, about that it's going forward. It's basically a variety show featuring some of the more uh, loved, well-known characters from past performances like Young Frankenstein, Rocky Horror, and uh, there's a brief teaser up on their Facebook page about it, but there's, uh, that's about all I know at this point.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Bill? Yes, it sounds like a, an interesting, uh, interesting uh, time. I tell you, the trees look good, good up there at Mar- at uh, Car Place, even out without decorations.
Yeah, it was, it was a little, uh, we had a little wind issue today, but we're working on it.
To keep those trees up.
I don't know. I, it's something about Christmas that brings out uh, the best in this town, and I think when people come to see what we have, you know, they, they will recognize that, so I'm very, very happy.
If somebody wants to see the teaser from the North Street Playhouse, we have it on our Facebook page, on, on the town's Facebook page, and it's super cute, so definitely go check it out.
I saw it earlier, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, uh, okay, any other questions for Bill? Thank you.
What is the date?
I have a comment. This is Carol Bond. I don't usually comment, but there was an article about the North Street Show in, on page twenty of the November twentieth post. It gives you kind of all the details about it.
Oh, uh, thank you, thank you.
When is the date for the uh, uh, Christmas uh Driving Tour?
The date for the Driving Tour is the eighteenth of December. Do I have the right?
December twelfth.
I'm sorry, December twelfth. I'm sorry. I'm not good on dates. Um, it's December twelfth. It's a Saturday from four to six P M. It begins at the Onancock School, um, proceeds up uh College Avenue to Liberty, and then across to um, the Mount Prospect neighborhood. It will feature um, uh, kind of live uh displays, meaning actual people um, recreating or creating like Winter Wonderland, Santa's Workshop, and Nativity Scene. It, it's perhaps knowingly or unknowingly, uh, it was, were really well-created in that no one has to get out and gather with a lot of other people. You basically dive up to the school, you get your bag of, of goodies that promote local businesses. We've had an amazing turnout from local businesses that have put coupons and advertisements into bags. You drive the tour, and at the end, um, I guess this is actually really important. Uh, if you're bringing little ones along, have them write their San- uh, letter to Santa. Um, it will be collected in a safe manner, apparently put into a very big red Santa's mailbox.
It's a spectacular thing.
And um, you know, and if, if you're listening and you do have young ones, um, have them write that letter really well because apparently there may be a surprise for the, the most interesting letter or the best written letter, so.
Right.
I, I just think it, it works really well. The Christmas Homes Tour, which was twenty years in, in growing and growing, um, really became our marquee event and, and a way to introduce people from far and wide to the town. We're hoping we still draw in some of those people, but we hope they do it over the span of four weeks, uh, s- distance safely as they walk Car Place to look at trees or cross the bridge to look at the uh, the lights along the center branch. And hopefully, we'll be back to a Homes Tour next year.
So it's a self-driving tour anytime between six and eight, correct?
Yes, yeah.
Four to six.
Four and six.
Four to six, I'm sorry. You can show up anytime during that time. Okay, all right, great, okay. Well, let's wonder if any, any other public comment from anybody else? Okay, well, we're moving on here. Uh, what comment? Uh, committee reports, uh, HRSD, Bob is not in attendance. Matt, do you have anything on that?
Yeah, I was going to include it in my town manager report, but I'm happy to, to give a quick update if you'd like me to do it now.
No, let's just, let's just wait for the town manager, yeah. The waterfront, uh, any, not, not, we pretty much discussed all that, didn't we, or anything?
Near, sir.
T Lee, anything on waterfront?
Couple of small points. Uh, almost everything was discussed either by myself or by Matt, but a, a couple of things I want to thank. Craig, you're a rock star down there. You've done a great job. One of the only good things to come out of this crisis, in my opinion, is Bill Burnham was there to help us, and he just walks the walk, talks the talk, and does a great job, and it made it so very interesting for our people. and does a great job and it made it so very interesting for our people. Matt, thank you for trying to put the golf cart thing together. And of course, the automobile, uh, been with various ones in the town, up and down from, uh, Long Island to the Keys. Almost every marina has a loaner car. Now, sometimes doesn't start, sometimes the doors don't close. It doesn't have to be a Jaguar. It'll work. And we appreciate that. Anyone off-season rates? Anybody, uh, as you know, you voted to allow our locals in for hours at the time. Anyone, uh, think of anyone that wants a great off-season rate, talk to Matt. Talk to any of us and we'll cut them a deal they can't refuse. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deely. Good, uh, all right. Uh, Planning Commission, I don't think they met, right?
No, we didn't meet this time.
Okay. Uh, Personnel, Catherine, I don't think anybody met on that either, did they?
No.
Okay. Uh, Strategic Planning, uh, we canceled the last meeting, but I guess there was an original meeting, uh, right?
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to give a, a 30-second report on that. The, uh, the, the committee broke the, the town basically into seven, uh, sections. And what the Strategic Planning Committee is going to do is take each of the seven sections over the coming months and talk about what it's going to look like, what it's going to feel like, what infrastructure changes need to happen, all of those things. So that when we get all seven together, then I'll be able to look at funding sources outside of tax dollars to start connecting some of these things. What infrastructure dollars can we get? If we have a walking trail, if we have an additional park or anything like that, what, what's it going to look like? What funding do we need so that I can get it all together and present it as part of a thoughtful strategic plan? So that's what's happening.
All right. Any comments on that? Okay. Mayor's Report, I don't really have anything. Uh, I guess we're gonna, we're gonna meet, uh, I guess we'll meet after the, uh, like, after the holiday tour. But I, thanks, thank you, everybody, Bill and all your crew and Mavis for doing all that. Sounds, uh, really looking forward to that. I, I know, uh, Matt and I have been talking a little bit about, you know, the COVID, uh, COVID response that, that town may have. Obviously, one of the first responses we've had is go to electronic meetings. And, uh, we're going to keep, we're going to keep close watch on this, uh, discuss, discussing with the, uh, Health Department, if any, you know, in the state, if things change. You know, the numbers are, you know, not, not great in Anacoma. They seem to be, you know, taking up around six, seven, eight cases a day. That's quite a few more than, you know, the one or two cases we were having in the summer. So I just like, you know, just like another, but the council and anybody listening that we are, we are looking at this and that, uh, you know, we're going to keep everybody informed if we need to make any, any changes. But we'll, we'll certainly follow state and, uh, Health Department guidelines. I don't have anything else. Okay. Uh, Matt, I guess Town Manager's Report?
Fletcher, could I, I'm sorry, could I ask a quick question? Is the town doing any kind of a tree lighting or is that just going to?
Well, that was, that's been canceled. Yeah, we were gonna, I guess, back to the Christmas, I guess we're going to turn the lights on. We usually turn them on Wednes, you know, Wednesday, I think, because we're going to light everything up on Wednesday. So, uh, uh, everything's up. I think we, just a matter of turning it on. I, we, uh, Matt and I haven't been able to get the, uh, uh, trees on the dock, but we'll, we'll certainly do that before the tour, you know.
There's not going to be a time when people gather.
No, no, that's definitely, we want to encourage, you know, yeah, unfortunately. Yeah. So we're just going to turn the lights on on Wednesday, uh, night, and then that'll, that'll be it. Sorry.
Fletcher's going to sing.
That would really be a sad occasion, I tell you. Carry a tune in a bucket. Anyway, uh, on that, on that note, we will hear, uh,
The, uh, the Town Manager's Report, basically, I sent one out in writing to you folks and I'm glad to publish it up on our website. But the, the three things that I didn't mention already in tonight's meeting, one is the, uh, the, the Tourism Commission of the Shore. That has, I've been, I'm sure you all remember that I was named as a commissioner and we had a strategic planning meeting. We also had a couple of follow-up meetings and, and Stacy Martin and Robbie were kind enough to take some time and bring me up to speed on everything that's happening. And what I can tell you is that Onancock is represented very well now in the, uh, on the Tourism Commission, and we're looking forward to being a part of that group for a long time coming with equal representation. Uh, one of the other items that's been taking up quite a bit of time is the Munich Code Project. Munich Code, if you remember, is the company that we contracted with to electronically present sort and, uh, give us one final version of our town code that you can vote on and be codified. I'm hoping to get the final version of that in my hands by November 30th and then get it in your hands for codification either in December or January. It's, there's a lot of follow-up that needs to take place, but I'm doing literally all I can do to get that to happen. The CDBG Grant for the Small Business Recovery, obviously that application is going to be reviewed in a public hearing next Monday. So please, if you're a local resident or business, uh, who's interested in learning more about the CDBG Grant for Small Business Recovery from COVID-19, I urge you to attend next Monday virtually at 5:30 PM. 5:30 PM, there will be a public hearing where we have a lot more information. The project management team is meeting with CDBG leadership tomorrow to develop a little bit more specifics about our application process and what it's all going to look like. We'll be able to share more specifics next Monday, uh, the 30th at 5:30 at the public hearing. And then last, I just wanted to bring you up to date on what's happening with HRSD. The transfer or the possible transfer of the sewer wastewater treatment plant and our collection systems over to HRSD. There's been some movement on getting an agreement in place to, uh, accept Nassau Waddix's wastewater plant DEQ, needs that agreement in place in order to, um, move forward with the project and permit and issue a construction permit to, uh, HRSD for the pipeline. In the meantime, we've had some visitors from HRSD that, uh, went and toured the plant and they're reviewing a little bit of our financial operations, our staffing, talking about what it's going to look like for them, what their costs are going to look like. So we're doing a little bit of back and forth there. Uh, I have, uh, expressed my, my informal request for what HRSD practices are normally when they accept employees of an existing wastewater plant. Things like what do we do with vacation time, sick time, their, their, uh, retirement plans? All of those things that are critically important to all of our team members. I want to make sure we get those addressed on the front end so everybody can have a, just a sense of confidence as we move forward if we actually do move through with this process. So that's sort of where HRSD is. I think that's about it of any substance. If anybody has any questions, obviously I'm glad to answer.
I do, Matt. Compliments on the, uh, streets, cross streets, school streets, especially Jackson Street. I've been on that one for a while. Queen Street Parking, King Street. And I would like for us to consider putting Warren Street on that list, and here's why. It is a pothole gravel street between Division and Mount Prospect. And the reason I'm interested is because I see it as a health hazard because in those water holes that are on the street, it's just a mosquito breeding grounds. And as far as I know, it's the only street in town that is a gravel street.
Yeah, that's actually.
May I add something to that too?
Please.
To Joy's comment, because I think someone just told me recently that the trash pickup doesn't happen on Warren Street because of the condition of the road?
It's not really the condition of the road, but what happened was the, Mike Davis and I drove around town and while we were negotiating the next contract with them, we were discussing, um, points of concern from their side of view and points of concern from our point of view. Warren Street was one of those areas where, uh, their request was that homes that are on Meadville hold their trash out to Meadville rather than using Warren as there, as where they pick up their trash. The primary reason is that the truck was doing a lot of damage to the bushes and the landscaping on Warren. And if they were going to Yeah, exactly. And if we were going to continue trash pickup on that street, we were going to have to really cut back the, the bushes and whatnot. And that, those are people's homes and, and it was just seemed like the path of least resistance to have trash put out on Meadville, just like everybody else on, on Meadville pulls their trash out to the front. So we're, we're, we're working with residents. We did hand-deliver notices to all of the houses that were going to be affected by that, asking for that transition. And obviously, if there were any concerns to call me, I had one, one person, uh, reach out to me. Uh, I, I spoke to him offline and we've gotten that, that issue clarified and, and they brought up another area of concern, um, that I'm going to be able to address for them. So I think that if we work with the residents and we work with Davis, we've actually gotten a contract from Davis that is for slightly less than our current year contract. And even after the four-year, I think it's a four-year contract, even after the multi-year inflationary changes, we're still only slightly over the, our current, um, contract amount. And that speaks to the fact that we can have, uh, residents do things like move their trash out to Meadville, like moving onto the odd side of the street for certain places because of the direction the truck has to go. If they can collect the trash from one side of the street rather than both sides, it saves an enormous amount of time. And, you know, as the old adage, time is money. In this case, it's actually true because they've got big equipment and personnel that they dedicate for this contract. So if we can make small changes like that, we can save ourselves some money down the road. And like Joy mentioned, we can keep the integrity of the streets in the, in the brush a little bit higher. There, there, as far as your comment about the, the condition of Warren, it's my list with Brian, we actually had a budget this year for roadwork and whatnot. And I, I think we are going to talk about putting crush and run on Warren rather than gravel. So it'll actually give it a, a much more impervious surface over the, the, you know, over the years. That street is never going to transfer over to, um, to VDOT. So using, using a tar and chip rather than a gravel is just going to serve us better over the years. But I didn't want to put something there and then just have it all torn up by a garbage truck.
So are you saying you'll put crush and run or tar and chip?
Tar and chip. But that's, I mean, we have to, obviously, we've got to look at our budget. We've got to look at the, the timeline. You know, there's a lot of other things. But that's, that's probably the street number one that I'm looking at if we can afford to get a tar and ship done.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else on the, uh, Town Manager's Report? Are you through, Matt?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I think we're, um, I think we're at Council Comments, right? Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I forgot to thank the, uh, the, the town crew, Terry and, and the couple, the guy, uh, they did a great job putting up the Christmas decorations. They handled a lot of that, uh, this year. I, I was actually out of town and they, they did a great job. Uh, they, they've really sort of taken over that. And, uh, truly, uh, our volunteers have had time to work on a few other things, uh, you know, uh, other Christmas projects that are going to look better because they've taken over the main ones. So
I'll let them know. Thank you.
Yeah, they did a great job and, uh, I appreciate that. All right. Uh, we're just going to go down the list here. Catherine, I think you're the first up on my screen here. Any comments?
I do have one thing. I just wanted to do a quick update on Main Street. We are working in conjunction with the town on our brand architecture. And just to give you just, um, a thimble of history on that, so you understand the process. We have pulled data from, over the last three years from our community engagement events. And, and based upon all that data, we actually went to Auto, which is a, um, design and marketing company in Virginia Beach, Norfolk. And that is who Cape Charles used to do their branding. And so, um, the two leads in that company are Pete Letty and Cindy Mackey, and they both are property owners in Onancock. And so, um, we said, you know, what really is branding? What, what do we do with all this data? And so they helped us put it together in a meaningful way, and that was probably over a year ago. Uh, and they gave us pro bono services, um, or in-kind services, really about $2,500 worth. So they were very kind to us. And then when we got our designation in conjunction with that, in terms of timing, we also received a $7,000 branding grant. And so we went back to the town and said, let's work together to do this town-wide branding. And so Auto has basically taken our initial, uh, their initial work and they're expanding that towards deliverables, which will start in January. And so that's kind of where we are now. We're looking at, um, a branding package, which includes a logo and a tagline. And, uh, we expect, um, final deliverables by late April or early May. So just to let you guys know that that is going on right now. We're real excited about it.
Okay, thank you. All right. Uh, Joy, I think you're next on screen.
No, I just want to thank everybody who attended tonight, um, in the community and for all of the good people who give so much to the town. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, Thelma, are you there?
Yes, I, I don't have anything tonight.
Okay. Well, thank you. All right. Uh, Ray?
Uh, no comments, but I hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving this week.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
Mavis, your last, not least.
Thank you, but I have no comments. Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, I think we're, uh, winding up. So, uh, I got everybody, didn't I? Yeah. Okay.
Yes.
We have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Catherine moved. Did you get, yeah. And then second?
I'll second.
Okay. Joy, all in favor? All right. Well, thank you. And we'll see you again in a week, right, Matt?
Yes, the Thursday, or Monday, the 30th at 5:30 PM.
Okay.
Good night, everyone.